The flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening everyone, thanks for coming and I hope you enjoyed that balmy thirty degrees today before we head back down to the single vision. First item up is approval of the January fourth minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is the bills list, if you have a motion to approve the bill.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, next up, public comments?
That's it. We can wind up.
Not all at once. Thank you. Next up, committee reports. Admin and finance, current total of bond balances is one million five forty-nine two sixty-two. They did get that additional principal payment through, we're now, the building is down to seven ninety-nine eight seventy-nine, so making progress. About a quarter of the way there, I guess, because the original was a little, about one point one million, so making progress, so thank you to everyone for that. See if they have anything else with real consequences around that, I'll catch them as we get to the committee. Next, public health and safety.
Yeah, we had a busy month. Traffic citations went up from sixty-two to hundred fourteen. Officer Martin isn't coming in time. Had sixty-one offense reports, fourteen warrant arrests, and thirty-eight general warrants, some of them issued, and the only other thing I have is we pick up the new cars on Monday.
That was my question, I thought that we were up to eighty thousand and the asset forfeiture fund. Will that cover, that'll make sure we got everything covered?
Yeah, we kept the check and all that, so yep.
Next up, park board.
I don't have anything to do. We're still waiting.
Planning the zone?
We've got a meeting scheduled for the first, second, I'm sorry, second Monday of February to discuss that two twenty-seven, that's something.
Public works?
We are in the process of making changes to our trucks, because some of them are not equipped with what we needed to be with right now, but we got everything under control right now.
Making changes, what do you mean?
We need, we are moving, changing out motors on our salters, because some of them are falling apart.
Motors on the truck?
On the spreaders.
Oh, okay.
On the spreaders. But we'll get everything done, Ken.
We get through the, the other night, I guess, one of them was having like some kind of fuel issues.
It's good, you know, we got, we got one truck back here in the bay right now, the police department, the spuder doesn't work on that one, or the plow. This one running, the other truck was at Lester House, we have Andy Keys come out, look at it, there's something wrong with the depth system on it, so it has to go to Dodge, unfortunately, that's the only one that's running with the plow and the spreader on it, but we can't, and the two different plow and spreader, we can't even change it to the other one. So, that one, tomorrow or Monday, we're going to Dodge and get it fixed, and meanwhile, he's got the Ford truck running, we got a plow on the Ford truck, we got the soft burn take on that, so he spent all afternoon, morning, pre-treating all the streets in town. So, they're ready for the storm, they're comfortable, one just dusting up to an inch.
Okay. And I was remiss on the, on the public safety report, I just want to pass along that I did receive a, a call from Judge LaBrasso last week, I think it was, I want to make sure that the committee, as well as the public, that aware that Chief's doing that outstanding job, and he felt like that he had cleaned up a lot of stuff that was hanging out there for a period of time, and that we should recognize and appreciate the good job he was doing, so.
Agreed.
That's all. Next up, fairs and festivals? All right, discussion, consideration of possible license regarding the spray park, discuss the construction of the spray park. I know there's been a number of emails in the last two weeks, whenever we last met, you got any, I don't know who all was on those, I didn't know anything you wanted to share, or?
Um, we're just waiting on to see if this last bond will be approved, yes, basically, that's going through ten more years himself.
But, yeah. The city's insurance company, whoever it is there?
No, it's just somebody I contacted, that agency.
Okay.
We sent the paperwork off, I got it Tuesday, we got it Tuesday, we sent it off, and I haven't been up to that yet.
So, we're not piggybacking off of somebody else, come right straight through?
The, yeah, correct, at this point, we're still trying to get it through my name, yeah.
Right, that's the way it all goes.
Yeah, and the option that I've had for, for, I've talked with some of these guys about maybe using, somebody else getting, acquiring a bond and running it through their name, the one guy I talked to, he wants to sit down and go over all the numbers, and he's out of town at the moment, and I'm not sure, you know, I can't, couldn't tell him it, we're too, so.
Maybe we ought to go down there and talk to him.
I know, yeah, but, and he, from talking to him, wants a pretty good chunk of money to do it in his name, and it is going to be kind of a pain in the butt, being the prevailing wage, and having to deal with the, you know, the wages and stuff, and so, but he wanted a pretty good, and we were still negotiating, and I would last left it at, let's see what happens if we get this other bond or not, and, but it is, he hasn't said no, I'll say that, but.
The plan B, if the most recent bond app doesn't go through, then that would be the fallback position?
Well, yeah, it's definitely an option, but I don't know that I can afford it, and depending on how much he wants to do that, that would be my concern, is if there's enough money left in it to be able to pay him what he's wanting to do, so.
Anyone else have a question?
I asked Steve to be, this is because you guys have any questions?
I have a couple of ideas.
Oh, okay.
Or at least you can approach. So, I want to make sure everybody's, you know, we're all, when we talk about a bond, you know, what we're talking about is a performance bond, all right, and a performance bond is a guarantee by the bonding company that the project is going to get built, and that's the performance bond, or gonna, the contract, the person you're contracting with is actually going to do the job for which they're contracted, and that's the, that's the thing that the performance bond would do, it's typically called a performance and maintenance bond, so that after it's built, then for a period of two years, it's kind of like the warranty period, so that's a, that is a performance and maintenance bond, all right? The issue, I think, that's occurring here, is that the bid you received from Golden Rule is so much lower than the other bids, that the bonding companies might be looking at it and saying, gee, I'm taking, I'm taking on a big bite here, because the combined bid of Golden Rule and Larkin together to do it is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, the next bid was four hundred and fifty thousand, so you're talking almost three hundred thousand dollars difference than, you know, from the, to the next lowest bid. I don't know it's going through the bonding companies, but if I were the bond agent, I'd be looking at it, say, okay, now, am I, I'm putting on a bond that on a hundred and sixty thousand dollar contract, where I'm guaranteeing what may be up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that would cause you to pause. I understand there's some other issues with the bank and reporting and that kind of stuff, I don't know anything about that, but that might be a problem, and so, let's just work with that for a moment, that that's the problem, all right? If it is, then you've got a couple of things that you could address, you could rebid it and see if you get another bid that comes in lower than the four fifty, but then you lose your really good bid that you want to take at the, you know, at the one sixty-eight, so that's not the best option, but, you know, ultimately fallback, that's what you might have to do, if we can't figure out something where you can keep this hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar bid. So, another option would be to approach Universal, who is your contractor, your construction manager. Universal is a construction company, they're working for Roland Park, one of the other cities that I'm city attorney for, I don't know if anybody's talked to them, but since they've agreed to supervise it or manage it, maybe they'd agree to just take it over and do it. They are a bondable company, I've seen their bonds, so you might consider that, if they would take this bid at one sixty-eight. So, that's one, that's an option. Another option is to don't do a bond, but instead do a letter of credit, and I understand from Tony that a letter of credit is possible, that the bank would issue a letter of credit, so let me tell you the difference between a bond and a letter of credit. The bond is, in effect, an insurance policy, that it's going to get built, and the bonding company, like the insurance company, is only the backup, and so, only if you've exhausted everything through the principal, does the bonding company finally step in to get the project done and pay. A letter of credit is essentially a guaranteed loan, that if certain events happen, the bank will pay the loan, and so, but the, the letter of credit is only going to be, at best, the amount of the contract, so you're going to look at a letter of credit of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and the circum, you'd have, I'd have to see it, but typically, the circumstance would be, maybe the, the, in this case, Golden Rule has agreed to build this project by this date, if it's not done, by this date, bank pays, it's pretty simple. Problem is that one sixty-eight plus one sixty-eight, that only gets you to three twenty-six or three twenty-eight, it doesn't get you to the four fifty, that's your next lowest bid, so you would be taking a gamble, that even with the full payment of the letter of credit, I still might have a gap that I can't get this project done, if four fifty is really the real bid. That's, that's the risk of a letter of credit. Now, if the next lowest bid were two hundred thousand, I'd say do the letter of credit, I love letters of credit, because they're a lot simpler, they're a lot more straightforward, and it's a lot easier to get money out of the bank than it is an insurance company, so, I mean, I, I have no issues with, in principle, using a letter of credit, the gamble or the risk in this case is, is there going to be enough there? And I don't know the answer to that, my experience tells me that if you're willing to go with the one sixty-eight, because you think the contractor can get it done, and you're pretty sure that, yep, their bid is good, then doubling that ought to be enough. If you're leery, you know what, I'm not sure that this is really going to be there, and, you know, maybe it really is four fifty, then you probably ought to be thinking about rebidding it anyway, because, you know, trying to, trying, giving a contract to somebody that you really don't think they can perform, and you really don't think that it's going to be a good project, and you really don't see how it can be done for that, is probably not the best way to start off the relationship. On the flip side, if you think they can, and you know what, they're giving you a great hometown discount, and they're committed to our community, and that's why they're doing it, and they're willing to take a lot less than, you know, the big other company bidders, makes perfect sense to me, too, and you want to go with the letter of credit, makes sense. So, the three options I've got for you is rebid, which I don't really like, that's my least favorite option, do a, ask Universal to see if they'll take it over, if they'd be the construction manager, would they just do the construction, or what they bid it at, I mean, it couldn't be that hard to find out, I mean, they're, they're obviously familiar with the project, and then the third is to investigate the letter of credit. I would tell you this, that if you go down that path, and Universal, and Golden Rule comes back and says, yeah, we can't get a letter of credit, then I think you're back to option one, because if they can't even get a letter of credit, then, all right, then that's, you probably don't want to do that, if that makes sense. So, the real issue for you all to discuss is, are we willing to take, if we go, if we tell Golden Rule, please explore the letter of credit, do we really think that, you know, doubling the one sixty-eight is going to be enough to get this project done? And if you think the answer's yes, then you could surely try it. If you still don't think it's going to be enough, then there's no sense asking Golden Rule to waste their time trying to get a, you know, letter of credit, if you all aren't going to accept it anyway. Any questions I can answer about that?
Pretty well explained, you know, good.
Well, thank you, it's not my first time.
And I say, exactly, I've got a few things. First, first thing is, I, I came to them with an offer of an irrevocable line of credit at least two months ago, that I had that approved, and they would not accept that. And I don't know if that was Universal's decision, or where that came from, exactly. The other thing is, are there any options to break this down into some smaller jobs that, what, what makes this required to be bonded? Can you answer that?
Sure, yeah.
Is it the size of it, is it the, or money coming from?
Because it's a public project, and because it's a public project, the city is required to have a bond that backs the performance and payment, and if they don't, then the city, and actually all the individual aldermen, can end up being personally liable. Now, in this instance, you know, we're probably never going to get to the mayor's pocketbook, but it could drain the city of its resources, if this ends up being a seven hundred thousand dollar job, instead of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar job, and you just hurt our balance, you know, it would, so, it's because it's a public project, that's why.
Okay, okay. So, even if it was smaller, then it'd be bonded, and what?
Correct.
All right. I guess, let me, do, do you want me to verify a line of credit?
Letter of credit.
Let, uh, well, right, from my balance.
Correct, irrevocable, letter of credit.
Okay.
Okay. Line of credit's a little different, line of credit's different to the letter of credit.
Okay, I'll, I'll try, I'll make sure that what that is, exactly.
Perfect.
Well, we rode the horse so far, I don't know when, wouldn't want to take a shot and see if he can complete the, the, he broke?
Irrevocable.
Irrevocable, like a letter of credit, but that's just my fault.
Is there a timeframe that we do want to hold to, so this doesn't just keep dragging on?
Next week, next week, next week type of thing, and now we're, we're into April, and still trying to figure out what to do?
We can't do work till April, so, or probably April or?
Right, and we need to know as soon as possible, I mean, not tomorrow.
If we were going to get rebid it, we'd want to start that process, or get a different company up.
Because we'd like to be ready.
If they can jump on it when it's?
Break around, whatever weather would allow.
Truthfully, we rebid it, you know, fully, the other bits were probably above budget right now anyways, the way it's looking.
Mr. Walker?
Um, well, the line of credit, it's double what they figured it was, I'm sure that they're not going to, I'm sure that they didn't underbid it that far, you know, I mean, in my opinion.
You would?
Yeah, I would hope, and, and these guys come, you know, highly recommended, and so, I, I, I don't really have, I don't really have a problem with that.
Can I mention something else? Steve, you have the different numbers there, from the bid sheet, from the different companies, whenever you look at that, you see where, just, I don't recall the numbers right off, but where have we bid the water mine? You see where Chris bid the, Golden Rule bid the water mine, then the other company bid the water line, what are those differences? You see how one, one price will be sixty thousand for something, the other company will bid a hundred and twenty for it, for the exact same thing, but then on another item, they flip-flop to where one company's way high and one's way low on another line? See what I'm talking about on that?
Well, I do, I mean, the water, the line item fourteen, the six-inch water main construction, two hundred and ninety feet, it's for Flowmaster is sixty-four thousand two thirty-five, for Mega Construction is fifty-six eight forty, and for Golden Rule it's thirteen two eighty, and for Royal Construction it's forty-three fifty.
Right, and then there's other ones that are the same way, that are kind of reversed back the other way, where one will be way higher, one will be way low, and that's kind of back to that conversation that we've had in the past, where the, these people come in wanting to build a nine hundred thousand dollar water park, whenever, if it's pieced out line item wise, it can be done for the hundred and eighty thousand, or hundred and seventy thousand, wherever the Golden Rule price is, but that's where we're coming up with that such vast number difference between them.
Yeah, a better example might be the erosion control and site restoration, so Flowmaster bid that, it's just a one-unit item, bid it at six-six four twenty, so six thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Mega bid it at forty-five thousand, Golden Rule bid it at four thousand six eighty, and Royal Construction bid it at forty thousand.
And we are literally talking about a hundred and eighty foot of self fence, that, that the two of us could put in in three hours, and then the final grade on the project at the end was just going to take a day and a half, and we're talking forty and sixty thousand dollars.
They weren't even going to put anything different than what you're talking about?
Exactly, because the line item was to put in self fence, and final grade on the project after the project is complete. We bid, we bid line for line, exactly the same thing as these other companies, and whenever they were coming in and throwing numbers like that, all that's doing is throwing a number at it, because we want the bottom line to be up here, because they're not going to build a four hundred thousand dollar spray park, they're going to build a nine hundred thousand dollar spray park, and it's going to end up the exact same outcome.
Or it's not their fluff number to cover it?
That's it, it is, they put a whole lot of fluff in it to cover themselves and to have profit.
Well, that was my next question is, what could go wrong that would have to, that would cost that much money?
The, and, and I will say that one thing, whenever, whenever the conference, whenever we sat down to acquire these numbers, these numbers came out to be very similar to a Bartlett West said this spray park should cost. You know, our numbers are right on to what they said it was going to cost, and then we have the big boys come in to go all around the Midwest, building spray parks, bidding against Golden Rule, and they're putting the fluff in there, they're putting the dollars in there that require us to work out of town to do a project like this.
But Bartlett West couldn't do it?
We don't have it.
And it could have been in?
Bartlett West is a engineering company and a construction management company.
But they couldn't?
Right, we, yeah.
And other one was the equipment, uh, equipment, uh, installation.
Right.
They put so much money.
Yeah, what was that?
Equipment installation, and you already got the concrete pad down, most of them, you drill holes and put in tag cones or whatever, you know, to hold the dam, wedge anchors, and water lines are already in place, and they put like sixty thousand dollars to put the equipment in, and the man hours that they're putting down to do that is completely assifying.
The, uh, feature installations ranged from fifty-seven thousand to sixty-nine thousand to eight thousand and twenty thousand, we're talking about thirteen features that require four or six bolts going into concrete, some of them, like you said, are already in the concrete, we can install those features, three guys in four days, at, at the rate of prevailing wage, Joe, is some, sixty bucks an hour, they're talking about a thousand hours to install these features. Sixty-nine thousand dollars to install these features, it's just absurd, the numbers that they want to come up with for that, and again, just because they want to build a nine hundred thousand dollar spray park, we have local construction guys that have done this repeatedly, and it's being done for a price of time and material, basically, not a thirty, thirty percent margin plus fluff. When these guys come in to do it from out of town, some of them have to have a motel, they've got to have a per diem, all of that, we live right here, we don't have a hotel, we don't have a per diem, we don't, you know, we have prevailing wage, but that's a huge factor in all of it, is that?
So, um, so my, my next question would be, so I'm just thinking on the negative side, so what would happen if something hap, something happened to him where he couldn't, he couldn't do it, do his job?
He's got a crew of people that would, that would complete the work, you mean as far as him personally?
Yeah, because he's, he's, he's the man.
I have thought about that, because quite honestly, for me to get a irrevocable letter of credit, I'm putting my house up, and so, that's my first thought, is, well, what goes wrong if I die? Well, we're going to finish spray work, because I ain't going to lose my house to, to guilt, so, and the, I got only help that I can handle, so.
I understand the price difference, because we went over this in the fall.
Right.
The thing is, for me, is just me personally, I think we approved this in September, maybe, October, somewhere in there, so it's been a long time and nothing's happened, if we would have went with the other companies, we would have, wouldn't be here.
It wouldn't have been an option. We'd have had to fund.
Well, we could have waited and not had this.
Another two years.
Taken out a loan, because?
Over three years.
Twelve or thirteen thousand every month.
I'd say Bartlett West gets doing the loan, and we thought for sure we had plenty of funds in there, and it just ended up being, it shocked Bartlett West, and Joe and myself, I think, whenever we heard those bids come in, it's just way higher than what we expected.
And we're still at the same spot, regardless, we're waiting for?
We can't do anything for a loan.
Getting all bid because of the bond, and I've thrown out numerous, and, and every one of them's a little bit different, and a pain in the neck trying to understand exactly what they want, and, then, when, especially when I was dealing with my own insurance company, it, it may be two weeks before I got an answer, I'm calling them over and saying, have you heard anything yet, you know, and, and I'm definitely hearing, you know, getting answers quicker through these other companies, but, you know, it's got pretty, frustrated, not, not getting anywhere, so.
I didn't understand until Steve so eloquently explained it, now, I mean, that makes good sense why they're, why they're leery about it.
Yes, and, and everybody asks, you know, what were the other next two bids? Well, that kind of, you know, everybody, it kind of makes them nervous, too, and I understand, even if I, these other companies that I talked to about getting on for me, well, that's very, that's their first question, you know, well, what were the other bids? And I, and we need to sit down and go over some numbers and find out why, because they're not willing to put their house up on me, you know, so.
So, what I'm hearing is, if we don't go with this bid, this project's DOA?
Well.
Because you don't have the funds to do it. Unless somebody comes in with a bid that we can afford.
Or to put up a bidding again.
Yeah, but I'm saying, if we're not in this hundred and sixty, hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand dollar range, we're just not doing this thing.
It may be something we have to wait on.
Yeah, but I mean.
We've been in the process for years now, so.
I mean, we're sitting on, what, four thousand?
We have three ninety-three right now.
After all the bids, and the next bid up was?
Five thirty, I think.
And if you ask, if you're, if you're looking at his second option, which was Universal, you have to put the bids up, right, again?
Well, Universal bid on it, so.
No, they don't, not the construction.
Yeah, just an arrangement.
So, that would be, you'd still have to put the bids up in order to ask?
And just to let you guys know, that fund is strictly use sales tax fund, so it averages between ten to fifteen thousand, depending on the good months, I mean, it's based on sales taxes.
So, you're about a year away, because?
Guaranteed, it wasn't committed.
And then the bids are going to be, you know, on the bully, where if you put out a bid again, you're going to get funds.
One of the concerns I have is that we've already burnt four or five months, and these are not exactly stable prices in a lot of areas, how much, if you're worried about a ten percent margin or something, how much is that already eaten into it? Is that? Is that going to, are you still going to be able to support those prices?
Yeah, I don't think as far as piping and stuff has changed a lot. Concrete may have gone up a little bit, um, and gravity, and minimal there, but there's not that much of it. But, um, I, I don't think materials are going to make huge changes.
So, I mean, there's, we have the, the one, we're good, uh, do we go to the next meeting and see if, well, first of all, you guys okay with the line of credit or the?
Letter credit.
Letter, letter of credit.
Irrevocable.
Yeah, irrevocable.
I, I'm okay with it.
Me too. And if there's a gap there, then the city or the park just eats that? Is that?
Yes. Yeah, yes. If, if the proj, if the letter of credit still isn't enough money to get the project done, then either it sits until you have the money or you just fund it and get it done. That's, that's, that's the risk.
So part of my confusion on that is, so you hired a management company who's going to be inspecting it, and you're not going to pay me for doing anything that I haven't already done and had, and been inspected to make sure it was done properly. And so the thought that it's going to cost double to do something that I've gotten, that you're, you're paying me only for what I've done, how, I don't understand how you're going to make another hundred and sixty to finish a job that.
I didn't understand what you're saying. The other side of the coin is, is that if your bid was wrong. If there was an assumption that was materially wrong, that now that one sixty really is three twenty plus.
Right.
And, and now we head down that road, but we don't find out until we get to the oops, we cash out the letter and we still don't have enough to cover it, uh, because the four fifty was the real number. I'm not saying that that's true. But that is where our risk lies. But to that, to, I guess to the board, I'd, I'd say, you know, do we, like Mr. Meyer was indicating, if, if you don't think that he can execute, then I would say you probably end it now. If you think that you can get it done, uh, your risk is really probably only about eighty or ninety thousand because you'll get the, one, the initial plus the one sixty on the bu, on the, the letter of credit. And then you would have whatever the delta was between that and say the four fifties.
Do we need to establish who is, where that, that gap, who pays that gap?
Well, it's going to be us because if that happens, he's exhausted his resources.
They come out of the park, right?
Yeah. But, but you got to know that he's not going to fail because he's, he's got a lot more to lose than the city.
Well, if you think that you're going to fail, you just end it now, you don't, don't let it, don't take it. We don't want your house.
The only thing, I mean, people with good intentions fail all the time, so you can't just assume, well, there's no way he can fail.
I'm just, I'm just talking about the effort. I'm just saying he, he, this isn't a light, this isn't a light decision for him.
No, not at all. And I, yeah, I appreciate, I mean, I voted for this back in October, so I was on board. I just know from a personal standpoint, if this was a project at my house, I would already abort it. I would be out and move on. So I kind of take that same.
But we don't have the money, you know.
So do we need to put a timeframe on this then?
Why don't you give us two weeks to the next, to the first meeting in February? And let me, you find out with your bank, I'll give you my card, have your banker call me. And then we'll, uh, either we can get a la, a letter of credit that would be acceptable to the city or not. And two weeks aren't enough.
Hopefully I have some.
What did you call?
Yeah, and you can reach out to Universal, see what they say.
Mr. Jones, you look like you had a thought.
What's that?
You look like you had a thought.
Oh, yeah, it's time to eat.
That's always a good question.
I'm good with whatever you can work out.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we beat that horse pretty well. Uh, new business, I have none, but I do have a question for Mr. Meyers and I don't know if, uh, just, uh, it relates to the election because we have to pay the election board or whatever, six thousand dollars or something, but everyone is running unopposed. And I know a couple of years ago in Lexington, somehow they were able to work with Lafayette County to get that, uh, suspend. They just basically didn't do the election because there was nobody running and they were able to save the money of the election. I mean, I realize you could have a significant write-in.
I was going to say, you have the potential for write-in, I guess, but, um, I'll find out. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that one top of my head, but I'll find out.
I'm not against the having an election, I just, if we don't have to spend seven thousand dollars and.
Right. No doubt. Okay, I'll see what that means.
Okay. All right, uh, next up, elected officials comments.
Are we going to address the water on break as far as bring it to the public?
Which, uh, this water line?
Right. Should we say something about that or?
Sure.
Bring us up the date on that if you would, real quick.
Yeah, uh. I didn't think of date, that was Tuesday night? Yeah. Tuesday night, the water main broke here at seven o'clock at night, seven seventeen it broke through the wall. At four o'clock Wednesday morning, when Officer Denali was leaving, he noticed the front end was flooded, so he called me and J D. We came in and we had about half inch to a quarter inch water throughout City Hall. And so we was out of water because we mostly came in and shut the main off and it took us till three o'clock that afternoon to get everything vacuumed up. We got some red, dry bags vacuumed up, uh, put fans on and everything. I can tell you right now, the plumber's cost, charged us seven hundred and seventy-six dollars to repair it. We had two breaks in that one line there. The way you see it, basically where it was, there was no insulation. One insulation from the bottom floor up to the bottom of the window, that was insulated, but it was on the outside of, of the wall and the pipe.
If you look up there at the top, you can see how it was.
And there was a big gap. And the insulation was settling down.
The insulation was on the wrong side of the pipe.
Yeah, on the side.
Unbelievable.
So like, they ran for nine hours, it was a big one inch pipe. As you can see, here's the pipe, we had two, three slippers breaking the same pipe. And so, um, we got, uh, given a bid to get the sheetrock put back in. Public Works is going to actually insulate the back, the way it's supposed to be done. Also, we noticed that the bottom of the spigot actually went outside the wall. They just cut a hole in the concrete and stuck it in, sealed it, so you could actually see, no gaps, really daylight outside. Luckily, nothing was really destroyed. I mean, we had a few boxes of paper that were sitting on the floor in the courtroom, you know, that, that got red, but, I mean, no computers. Luckily, all computers were off the floor, so it was just spending a day cleaning and drying and in and out.
Have you got a hold of embarrassing people who have all that stuff stored in those closets to come work?
That wasn't that bad. There's a little bit of water in it, not bad. It, it just, everything went the amount.
Was that company bonded that did that job?
I don't know. I wasn't able to see all the bills.
Probably be out there two years ago.
And we had to close the hall down on Wednesday just so we can clean it up because, like I said, we didn't test none of the computers, the electronic stuff, did, they was cleaning and dried and.
One, one other thing that Joe and I have discussed is because the water bills were late getting out, it's not charging a late fee this month because we don't know how much we contributed to that with the bills being late, so.
Fair enough.
Otherwise, thank you everyone for coming this evening and sharing your words of wisdom and technical specialty to, uh, help us make better tortoise decisions. If no one has anything, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
So, thank you.
Call in favor?
All right.
Any vote? Stand in adjourn?